All right, it is six o'clock. And I do call this regular city council meeting to order. And as always, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Everyone please rise, face the flag. My pledge of allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America. The United Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting, the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a role for us?
Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Deb Bensky?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
John Lockwood? Julian Peterson? And Eric Olson?
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. These are items that we will take one motion and vote on those, each one of those items with that one motion. If there's any items that council members or staff for that matter would like to see moved to the regular agenda where you would vote on those separately, this would be the time to tell us. Anybody that would like to see?
Yeah, I would like to park and rec minutes, please.
Okay. Parks and Rec minutes...
Of September 11th.
It's a non-action item, but just the minutes itself?
Yes.
Okay, you want to put that under new business? Let's go like...
Number six?
Yeah, letter F, number six, whichever. Okay with that? Okay, so we have one item that we moved off of the consent agenda. Anybody else? If not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with that one change.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Keela and second by Hagan that we approve the consent agenda with that one change. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Regular agenda, Sandy, you say you have one thing that was handed out?
Under number nine, new business, number one, additional information regarding the special use permit for William Duginsky. Duginsky Garage LLC was distributed.
Okay, so we have that one item and we will be discussing that, actually it's a letter A under new business. So that will be attached to that. Okay, under announcements, we have a presentation of a plaque to Mark Nolenberg for his 30 years of service to the city of Opaaca. Mark?
That's so cool.
Do we have to accept the agenda?
That does. That's so cool.
Point of order.
Well, you know what? We didn't vote on the agenda, did we?
Yeah, we'll do it right after this.
You want a mic on?
Sure.
Thanks. Thank you. Is this on?
Well, I want to recognize Mark for his dedication to the city, with the water department for 30 years. It's pretty amazing. He must have started as a very young man, but I appreciate all that Mark does. He handles all our, our whole water department, from water pumping to source protection to distribution, storage. We had over 100 water services this winter that were frozen at their, Mark's department and they had to deal with. Main breaks, on and on. So I appreciate his experience. For me, it's a treat to have a department head that has the number of years of experience that Mark does. He's a dedicated employee. He is a Bears fan, I must say, but we can't, we can't all be perfect. But I do want to recognize him and thank him for his efforts in 30 years. Thank you. You can speak if you'd like. Thanks again.
Awesome. Thanks, John. Mark, thank you. I was corrected, we did not have a motion and a second for the regular agenda, so let's go back and just get that approved with that one handout.
Move to accept the agenda with that one handout.
Motion by Keela and second by Hackett that we approve the agenda with that one additional handout. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Going back to announcements, again, we have a presentation of a plaque to Jeff Johnson, Lieutenant Jeff Johnson, for his 25 years of service to the city. Jeff is not able to be here tonight, but we'll get it to the chief. And chief, would you make sure that Jeff receives that? Thank you. Public input, this is a time where a citizen or even council or staff could speak to us on a non-agenda item. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record.
Oh, I have one thing.
Okay.
I got a text from Steve. He asked that I remind everyone of the exercise this Thursday for emergency government. It's at 5:30 at the EOC, which is upstairs of the police department. And also to let everyone know, September is National Preparedness Month. There's more information on our website and on Facebook.
Awesome. Terry Schultz from the Chamber of Commerce did hand out a little flyer to each and every one of us, too. The Channel X Blues Festival is going on, what is that, on October 3rd and 4th? Right, October 3rd and 4th. So FYI for everybody. Okay, let's move on to department announcements and reports. And let's, as always, let's start with Jean Peterson, our city treasurer.
Thank you, mayor. We've been working pretty hard on the budget. Most of the numbers are in the reports I'm making up, but I'm not ready to reveal it yet. Still working on it. All the departments are going over their second time to make sure they have it all in.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks, Jean. Next then, we have the library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, right now, we have a new exhibit called Art No Canvas Required, and I hope you'll stop in and look at it. It's interesting to see how people take everyday objects and create art pieces out of them. We also have barn quilt art on the wall that's quite large. Also, we're still reading Mockingbird, so there are opportunities for book discussion this Friday night and next Thursday night. One at Rhythm &amp; Brews and the other one at the library, it's a potluck. And then we'll have the final film on the 2nd of October during the day. We are participating in Fallarama with the Park and Rec. We're going to have a maker space where we're going to encourage kids and families to stop in and do science experiments with us. We have a Halloween costume swap, and I think this is the third year we've done that, so you can drop off your generally-used costumes from now until October 4th when the costume swap is. Our baby garden schedule is changing a little bit. This is for the very young children and their caregivers for babies, too. And that's on Tuesday and Wednesday at 10:00. And then we are starting storytime in October on Thursday and Friday at 10:30. And we've had some changes recently to our Wisconsin Digital Library, so if you're somebody who wants to get started with eBooks, it's easier than ever and you can borrow for free from the library, so see me about that.
All right. Thanks, Peg. All right, next, we have Brennan, but Brennan is, I think, on vacation. So we'll pass it to Director of Public Works, John Edelbeck.
Okay, my report is in your packet. We are under budget for all our divisions at this time of the year, which is a good thing. We have a few things upcoming. Our grid separator installation will be this fall yet at the wastewater treatment plant. That will be under budget per what we budgeted. We have some concrete asphalt works, paving work still proceeding. We've got a couple months of good weather yet for that type of work, so we're trying to get as much done as we can. The art piece in South Park, the concrete sidewalk work has been poured, and so that after today, tomorrow, you should be able to get on that. And they poured a pad for a bike rack and a few other items up there, so. Other than that, it's been pretty routine work. Again, we're trying to get a lot done here, and we'll be transitioning into leaf pickup here in about a month or so, end of October. That's all I had, mayor.
Oh, okay. Thanks, John. Appreciate it. Parks and Rec, Aaron.
Thank you, mayor. To start with recreation, men's softball and kickball. Co-ed kickball ended this month. Flag football and volleyball, both youth programs, as well as mini kicker soccer and gymnastics have started up in the last two weeks, along with our adult volleyball, which we have five leagues running currently. That started up last week as well. Projects, our Augie Austin Jim Roof is set to start construction the first week of October. They are expecting only a week of work. The deadline, however, is October 31st. Our sled hill, we're working on that. We've decided to go with Bauer Electric for the lighting to be done. That'll save some money in BRM's overall budget, and we will reallocate to other parts of the project. We did get the topsoil done last week and are putting irrigation in the T-ball and ice rink area, and we are seeding that before the end of the month. And we also just did get our last quote back from American Asphalt, and that will give us some direction. Dan Sherman is putting together a summary. Dan is the BRM rep that we've been working with, who he'll put together a summary as far as the budget goes on the asphalt prices. John mentioned the art piece. Thank you to the Public Works guys for helping out pour that concrete that was set in, as well as install the piece. A big thank you to the Arts Board and the Opaaca Foundry for making that whole project possible. It really is a neat piece. They put tons of hours into it. So I would suggest go checking that out. It's where the old bathrooms were located halfway between the beach house and the new pavilion at South Park. That will kind of have a little ceremony or recognition at Fallarama. I'm crossing our fingers that it's not pouring that day. Fallarama is this Saturday, September 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And we've got $5,575 in private sponsor dollars, and we are up over 20 vendors spots sold, so that's a big plus. Our Halloween party is in planning right now. That'll be October 31st before trick-or-treating from 3:00 to 5:00, and that's a free event for the community at the rec center. Phase two, planning for South Park. We did meet with some reps from the DNR for shoreline restoration this week, so we're working on that. Brainerd Bridge Playground Equipment will be installed September 20th. That was a donation, if you guys remember, from the Opaaca chapter of the J.C.'s. So that will be installed this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. If anyone wants to volunteer and help out, I think they would, they would much appreciate it. After that, we'd much appreciate if you came to Fallarama. Strategic plan was dispersed to the park board last Thursday, and I'll be sending that out to the council members here, too, in the next week. What the plan is, is to have park board look at it about, over the next month, get me any input, suggestions, comments, concerns during that time period, and then we can make adjustments and then hopefully adopt it after that. We've been through this process. It's been about a year process. We don't want to rush it now that we're at the end. We want to make sure we get a good product. So that's where we're at with our strategic plan. So look for that, and that is all I have, mayor.
All right. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Busy time. Chief Cope?
Thanks, mayor. You see my report to council in your packet along with the monthly report. Couple of noteworthy items, budget-wise, at 67% of the fiscal year, we're just under 66. Also, an officer was released under the terms of their probationary status, and we're currently in the process of refilling that position. We've started the hiring process, taking applications through the end of this month. And also in the packet, you'll see kind of a lengthy article on heroin abuse. And although it was written in the Dane County area, it applies statewide. So I really would ask you to just take 10 minutes and read that article. It's very informational, and it's applicable to everywhere in the entire state.
All right. Thanks, chief. And Henry?
Yes, mayor, council, just a few items. You might have heard that the, there's been a court ruling on voter ID, so that new change will be put into effect for election in November. Like to say Sandy's right on top of all that. It did affect a few absentee ballots that were filed, so we have to go back and ask for some verification on ID. But we do intend to get some information out to our voting public, so they're aware of the change. A lot of, my report talks about a number of items, but just a couple of points. Have spent some time with the recruitment and selection of finance director. We are tending to go to closed session. Mayor and I wanted to bring you up to speed on where we're at with that process. While Brennan is not here, I did want to mention the business forum that was held last night. I think it was very well attended. We had probably 30 people. Thought the tone of the meeting was very positive. There was a nice wide range of representation there. And a commitment to get back together in four to six weeks to kind of talk about next steps. So I thought that was a very good, good effort, and I'm pleased at the folks that came out. And then finally, as the chief had mentioned, we're at 67% of the budget year, and the areas I'm responsible for, we're at about 62%. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on then to new business. This is a, the first one under the new business is a special use permit by William Duginsky for Duginsky's Garage LLC, which is better known as Bill's Auto. And if you don't mind, I'm going to turn this over to John, but let me just set this up a little bit, because there's been some, little bit of discussion since then. After John presents then, I'm going to ask, and I know this is unusual at times, but I'm going to ask Mr. Duginsky to step up to the podium and just find, just explain what he's found out since the city planning commission meeting on, some of the recommendations that the planning commission had made at the meeting and how that will affect Mr. Duginsky's business. So, John, you want to go ahead and just set up what we discussed at the planning commission?
Sure. Yeah, I'm taking over.
Thank you for filling in for Brennan.
Yeah, taking over for Brennan tonight, so, but obviously he was at the meeting. The city planning commission, I handed out the minutes of the meeting, and there was a motion by, a motion and seconded to approve the special use permit for this submittal, contingent on three staff recommendations of improvements within 90 days. And the special use permit submitted by Mr. Duginsky relates to a, to be able to sell vehicles on his property. And...
Yeah, let's just go back to the first picture.
That one?
Yeah, one, one more back. Yeah, this is the front of the building here. We'll just stay there for a while. And he was interested in selling vehicles, and on another handout, I have your central business district. In the central business district, marked in there under special uses automobile sales and service. So this is listed in the central business district as a special use. So Bill did submit an application for a special use specifically to sell vehicles. And the motion then was to approve that special use contingent on three recommendations. Those three recommendations are fencing of the tire and refuse area, or fencing or shielding of the tire area, paint parking stall, lot stalls, and consider expansion of the building in the future to accommodate what we see as a tight property. Mr. Duginsky did submit a striping plan that the commissioners and the commission thought was reasonable. And then if you go to, just scrolled to the next picture, you can see on the left there, tire and refuse container, and go one more then. Yeah, and there was concern with this being in the central business district to screen this in some manner. And if you look on the last handout I have, it's called special use. This is from our municipal code, and I'll just read the highlighted areas. Special uses are subject to the approval of the city council, which is recommended to the, from the planning commission to city council, and to such other conditions as herein after designated. So it's subject to the approval of city council ultimately, this special use that's being proposed. The basis for approval, and it identifies the basis there, but it includes such considerations as the effect on the established character and quality of the area, its physical attractiveness, the movement of traffic, the demand for related services, possible hazardous, harmful, noxious, offensive, and nuisance effect as a result, noise, dust, smoke, odor, other factors as would be appropriate carrying out the intent of special use grants. So the whole intent of a special use is that it's not allowed by right, but that it's allowed by special use and allows the planning commission to recommend, and then city council to take in certain factors that can be conditioned as part of the special use. And that's, that's exactly why these items are talked about. And on the bottom, it states here, such decision shall include an accurate description of the special use permitted of the property on which the special use is permitted, and any and all conditions made applicable thereto. So I guess that kind of sets the stage that Bill approached the city requesting to sell vehicles that would trigger a special use permit. In his submittal, after discussion with staff and the planning commission, the planning commission is recommending approval of the special use contingent on the three items, fencing for the tire and refuse area, paint parking lot stalls, and that would be per Mr. Duginsky's submittal, that he did submit striping for that, and consider in the future expansion on the property towards the White House, which Mr. Duginsky owns. And again, that's only consider that for the future, since it is a tight, tight site. Mayor, is there anything else? I know you're also a member of the planning commission. Anything that you wanted to expand upon regarding that?
No, I think the only other thing, I should say yes. There was only one other thing that currently Mr. Duginsky has a permit to sell mopeds, is that right?
Motorcycles.
Motorcycles, I'm sorry. Motorcycles on that site, and what he would be doing, instead of selling the motorcycles, would be selling the cars. Obviously, as John has explained, when you are selling vehicles, you do have to get a special use permit for that, and that's the reason that he was in front of the city planning commission. Anything else? John?
No.
Okay. So...
Thank you.
Bill had actually, basically, two items that he looked at after the city planning commission meeting, which was last Tuesday, or last Wednesday, sorry. And he has some information that he would like to share with council that he was not able to share with city planning last week. So Bill, if you would, and just give your name for the record, please, and then just explain.
Phil Duginsky, owner of Bill's Auto Repair and Opaaca. I checked in on the fencing and striping and all that. When I agreed that, yes, I would do the fence and everything, I, I guess I was not thinking ahead to find out what it would cost first. The cost of the fence to cover that up is astronomical money. They're talking over $2,000. I, yes, it is an eyesore. I understand that. Normally, they're picked up on a regular basis. They had some issues with the tire pickup this week or this month. I just, it's too much money. I'm going to have to, if we can't change something or work something out here, I'm going to have to withdraw my application. It's just, it's too much money with all the fees and everything else that goes along with it.
So, understand it as John has explained, that if we do, if, if he withdraws his special use permit, he would not have to put up the fencing. So it would look the same as it does right now. Okay? So the reason he's asking for this, and then he would not be able to sell cars...
Correct.
...anymore. He obvious, I, I'm assuming he would still be able to sell motorcycles there because he did have that license.
Yeah, Brennan, you can talk to Brennan about that. I don't know, Brennan is saying that if that, if there was no sale within 12 months, that that special use lapses, so I don't know if that's the case or not.
Okay. Okay. So I guess, looking at this, you know, I mean, as Bill has said, the tires, it does not look very nice there. Bill, what, what other options have you come up with that you think would work for us?
I'd love to get the tire pickup quicker, done more, do once a month. It would, there'd be less. I mean, right now, we're working on, it's going on two months since they picked them up. Like I said, normally, they usually pick them up every six weeks. They had issues with a truck or something. I'm not exactly sure what they gave me for an excuse. That's why there is as many tires as there is out there. And like I said, I agree, it is a little bit an eyesore, but I have talked to a lot of people in the area and everything, and half the people around there couldn't even tell you where the tires were on the lot, until John probably never realized the tires were there until this whole thing got brought up to begin with. Yes, it is an eyesore. I don't believe the striping in the parking lot's going to make one bit of difference, but whatever, that's over here and over there. I guess I, I don't know what to do anymore, you know, at this point.
So what you're asking for is you would still like city council to grant you the special use permit, but without the fencing for the tires?
If possible. And if I, well, I would, I guess I would agree also that I would try keeping it cleaner back there, more organized.
Okay. So you understand his dilemma, obviously. He's, all he's trying to do is sell three cars here.
At the most.
Yeah, I mean, and the only reason we're here, of course, obviously, is because of the special use permit. He's not really changing the operation of his business. The main part of his business is auto repair, which includes changing tires and so on. And again, the only reason we're here is because he wants to sell cars, and now our economic development, Brennan, and, and, you know, that's his job, is looking at the site and trying to clean up the site a little bit. But in this case, is it fair that we make him do that considering the cost that's there and the limited amount of space that he has on that property at this time? So given that information, we can grant the special use permit as city planning has brought forward, which would mean that he would have to fence it and have to straighten the lot. If we did that, and he decided to not put the fence up, he would not get his special use permit until he actually put his fence up. I'm assuming at some time it would lapse. Council can change the recommendation from city planning to fit more to what Mr. Duginsky is requesting, which is basically no fencing at all, and he'll try to keep it as clean as possible. The third thing you can do is just to die the special use permit.
Can we send it back to the planning commission and see what they have to say?
Well, I guess we have a fourth one, yes. We certainly can.
Mr. Duginsky, is there any chance of consolidating those used tires with other businesses? Get them off your premises? I mean, Matthew's Tire has used tires.
Yeah, they got a whole pile out back of their shop, too, so...
Okay, a little less visible, though, I think.
Depends on what street you're on.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm not trying to be smart or anything. It just depends on what street and where you're driving past for the visibility of it. You know, generally, from Fulton Street, you can't see the tires, because there's vice vehicles parked there and everything. Going down Franklin Street, yes, they are very visible then. And I don't, I don't know if Matthew's... And I don't, I, I don't know if Matthew's Tire, Nelson's, or anybody would, would agree to have more tires on their lot because they have run into the same, they're gonna run into the same problem I got then, you know.
I'd like to see, Bill, I'd like to see you be able to do this. And I have no problem with making a motion that if you want to stripe it, talk about expansion later. And in the future, as more money starts coming in, then talk about fence. But I'd like to see businesses, you know, be able to succeed, and, and you were nice enough to come to us, we want to work with you. My opinion.
Is there any way, Bill, that you could, I saw the dumpster or something there too? Now the tires are coming out beyond the dumpsters toward the street. Thought if you could just keep it back dumpster or back tighter somehow, but maybe just.
My, my biggest problem I have there is you got these people that are, want these cheap tires or whatever. So they're normally, they're nice stacked up, but give it a couple of days out there, and then people rummage through them at night. They don't want to get caught by the police department that's right there, so they leave it a mess. And my other question or concern I had, if I do put this fence up, it's not gonna stop these people from jumping the fence. If they jump the fence and get hurt, who's liable? Because they're on my property now, I become liable if somebody jumps the fence and breaks a neck or, you know, something of that nature, you know? Which is something else I'm a little concerned about, I guess. But yes.
Bill, you mentioned that you're gonna try to have the frequency increased of tire pickup. Do you think it's reasonable that they would agree to pick them up once a month?
I would hope so. The only reason I'm saying that they, they would probably is because the company that I'm dealing with now, I pretty much got eighty to ninety percent of the places in Wapaka, like Matthew's Tire, the Truck Stop, Nelson's, are all using the same company. So they don't have to come up specially for me anymore to pick up my tires.
Right.
So I, I would believe that frequency would probably be easier able to be done, because it will be enough for them to come up here with semi.
So you say that's two months' worth, if you picked them up every month, you could, it would be reasonable to assume it would be piled, be half that big?
Half that, correct. And like I said, it's, you can't really see behind the dumpster there, but that's where everything got thrown back there when these people go through and try grabbing the scrap tires.
There's no scrap value for tires at all?
No, it costs me, it costs me $2 and some odd cents a piece to get rid of them. So if somebody takes them, it's kind of nice for me.
Okay, John, I'm sorry, yeah, you put this back up.
At the plant commission, and, and actually, in my position of a voting member on the plant commission, I guess I, I was less interested in a, a surrounded fence that's contained more than a shield. And I think that there's maybe some middle ground here, that if there was a, a wooden fence that was brought out, out to about the dumpster as a shield off of Fulton Street, which is the high-volume roadway, I think that might be a middle ground here between a contained fence with a gate and, and all that.
Like from here to here?
Right, right. I mean, I, I think that, especially if the volume is reduced, as Bill was saying, you know, the only reason we're talking about this is because there is a change in operation. And, and it's a means to make this a little better site from the city standpoint, from central business district. So I see that as something, maybe as an in-between that meets, I think, my objective as a plant commission member, without trying to contain the whole, you know, and, and fence this whole entire area in with a gate and all that. I, I would imagine it would cost that amount. So I, I see that as one consideration.
Bill, what do you think?
I can try to find out what it would take to do it. I'm not gonna, I, obviously now I'm not gonna agree to anything because that got me in trouble last time I did that. I mean, I could check in to see what it is, I, okay. So usually there's cars parked there, which was a good time to take a picture, right, like that when it's open like that. Did you actually take a picture from Fulton Street straight on at it, John?
Yeah, Brendan took three pictures here. That's off of Frank.
Generally, you, you, generally you can't see them tires. And I understand from Franklin, so yes, it is an eyesore. If you're on the right angle coming down Franklin Street and that, yes, it is an eyesore.
Seems to me though, Bill, that, and again, you're gonna have to look into it, but if you were to put out a, about an eight-foot section of fencing there, it really wouldn't affect your operations.
No, I'd have to, I'd have to put it farther back towards the south, towards that little white house there. Because if we're trying to get in and out of a car, if you brought a fence up there, trying to get in and out of a car, you're gonna be slamming in at a fence, so I'd have to back the fence up a little bit farther to the south. You know, a couple of feet, just to be able to do that. Is that gonna be an issue? I don't know, the dumpster area there? Yeah, I, I, the problem with the dumpster is it has to be on an angle like that for them to be able to pick it up. Which was the other issue with the fence. I'd have to have a 10-foot opening in there for them to be able to get their truck backed in there to be able to pick the garbage up, which added more cost and. I mean, I, I guess it's something I would, I'd be looking into. I could look into it, see what, what we could do and something like that.
Go ahead.
Did the plant commission talk about Bill's, the used cars on the corner? You know, are we in a, a vision triangle there? Are we creating some? If, if that's where those used cars go, I mean, I'm just, if they go somewhere else on the lot, it's probably not an issue. But did the commission talk at, at all about that?
The, the cars were proposed to be on the west side of the parcel.
Can you go back? Okay, so, so Bill's drawing wasn't, isn't what ultimately you want to do?
My drawing.
And there is, you know, this is central business, so I mean, it is a zero setback. You know, we understand that, and it's, I mean, with auto repair, there's gonna be a lot of vehicles, I mean, that's understandable. And I think the, even the parking layout that Bill identified is how they're parking now, and it's, it's logical, you know? It would probably just help someone who is maybe coming in to get a quote or coming in, if the stalls are striped, it'd be more likely they're gonna pull in and, you know, park in there. If it's striped.
Okay, if you like John's idea, obviously Bill said he was gonna take a look at it, so and see if it worked for him. So I guess, again, we have the same options that we have, except that we have an alternate, alternate plan that might satisfy some of us.
Mayor, what do you think about Bill looking into that eight-foot section or sew-up fence? And then reapproaching planning commission with the results, and you can, the commission can go from there, and does that sound reasonable?
Bill, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, I mean, I think that's the right thing to do, obviously, because he's not sure yet either, so. I think that makes sense. Our next city planning commission meeting would be the second Wednesday in October.
That, that adds extra time though, and I'm wondering if, could this be expedited by bringing it back before council next time? Or is that not the right protocol?
We certainly can.
That's just one day before planning commission. They meet again October 7th.
Right.
And October 8th is planning commission.
Right, but then we'd have to.
Their plant commission is just advisory.
Right.
To council.
So if we were to approve this, say, conditionally upon an eight-foot or 10-foot fence or whatever we decide on, and then he comes back at the next council meeting saying, yes, I can do this, or yes, I can't, no, I can't, then we can take action at that time too.
I think if that's your plan, I, I would recommend you table this, not make a decision tonight until Bill commits to that. Because once you approve a special use permit, it's established with that condition. And he would then, I guess you would have to approve a variant, a change from that. You know what I'm saying? You're, you're probably better off tabling this if, if that's your desire. Than approving it and then trying to change it next meeting.
I mean, I think as long as Bill is okay with this, if we bring it back to city planning at the next meeting, and then the, the following week would be a council meeting, right? Or the 21st would be a city council meeting. So we're adding a month to the, to this. But at that time, then we would all be on the same page, obviously. I, I don't, I mean, as long as, as, as it doesn't put any hardship on you, Bill.
It's already been three months, so.
Government always works fast. Okay, so we're okay? We would need a motion to table this if that's what you want to do, or, or send it back to city planning commission, however way you want it.
I'll make a motion that we send this back to city planning.
Second.
A motion by Hackett, second by Mayo, to send this request for a special use permit back to city planning commission based on the information that we received tonight. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Bill, thanks. You want to get to, back to John or Brendan? Okay, we are under new business letter B. This is a license report number 1248. This is a temporary class B, class B retailer, retailer's license for Badger Den Brew Club. And this will be held October 30th, 2014 at the Wapaka Train Depot, which is at 525 Oak Street. Enter your names on this.
Yes. Is the representative for the applicant here? Yes, I see her. There is a request, looks like a really fun event. They want to hold, hold a beer tasting in the depot. And their club's representative is here, if there's any questions.
Amanda Bronck, just a member of the brew club this year, secretary of last year. We worked with the library a year ago to do their exhibit. And we did a tasting event and informational session for the public, free. And we wanted to get out there some information about our club and about some of the art of brewing and, and some of the varieties of beer that we actually encounter with our club and that members make. And we, it was a big hit for us and for the community as well, as far as getting some information out there of, of things that we can do. And this year, we wanted to look at doing something again in the community. And the Wapaka Train Depot has kindly allowed us for a small donation to use their building for this event. And I've also talked with the local SAD coordinator at the high school about offering any funds that we raise as a donation to that club on behalf of the brew club to work with, educating students about destructive decisions. It's kind of a community effort as well. And again, getting out kind of our name as the brew club as a community event and an organization that we have.
Thanks. I have one question. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Amanda Bronck.
Sorry, I should have wrote it down. Amanda. Badgers Den Brew Club is a nonprofit?
We are not under nonprofit, but we are, according to the rules of the application, we are a bona fide club. We've been a club since.
Will you be selling product?
We will not be selling. We are not taking in any money. There is no cost. It is, it is a free opportunity for the community.
So when you said you might make some funds?
It's a free will donation. Anybody that comes can, can donate to the cause. And in a sense, we, we really work with community events to do, or work with events in the community to raise some donations and always give those back or try to give those back to the community. Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Henry, she, I kind of cut her off a little bit, but obviously there's a license report here. They meet all of the tests of being able to receive this license.
I would say so, but again, every time we have one of these, you have to determine the parameters on it. Again, on the form we made up, being that it's indoors, I don't think fencing's required. And they are asking for the waiver to have underage attendees at the event. So that's a little special request as well.
Oh, I don't, I don't believe that.
Oh, did I miss out? Did I?
No, I, we actually, I.
Another report in here, maybe I missed that one.
I applied as well to be the server, a server's permit. So I've taken the course for the responsible server's permit as well.
Okay, so I'm, I confused that with another report, sorry.
Anybody else have anything? Motion?
Move to approve license report number 1248.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Pachatsky, that we approve of license report number 1248. This is a temporary class B retailer's license for the Badger Den Brew Club, which will be on October 30th at the Wapaka Train, Train Depot. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Sounds like fun. License report number 1247. Henry, your name's on this one too, so.
Okay, so you see these fairly regularly. These are requests for bartenders licenses. They are pending, if your approval pending the background check. And then we double check to make sure all fines and any fees owed to the city are paid before we issue them.
Okay.
I'm not sure if Chief's completed, all his checks are not, I don't know. We just typically approve them and then the staff will follow them. Pending approvals, pending the background check, that's correct.
I'd move for approval of license report number 1247.
Back up.
Motion by Fenske, second by Hackett, that we approve of license report number 1247. This is an operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, we have a license report number 1249. This is a class B license for Wapaka Community Arts Board for their Phantom Art Gallery, which is October 9th, 2014. And it's, is it, this is where it's gonna be held, at 110 East Union Street? Is this correct?
Yeah, the former bumper-to-bumper business.
I guess we have a representative here, Anita.
Hi, Anita Olson. We are starting in September, our fifth year of having a phantom art gallery in our community. It has been in several locations, but the longest has been on the corner of Maiden and Fulton. We had to leave that location in January because of a water leak. And the empty building that we were able to have permission to use was a empty bumper-to-bumper Pickers Playground. The Farmer State Bank owns that at the moment. And so they let us use their building. Four times a year, we change the art out. We have a call for art. We leave the artwork in the windows. No one enters the building. And twice a year, when the weather is nice, we, we ask for a wine license so that we can meet the artists who are being introduced to the community as having their art in the window. And that's what we're asking for, for October, when the weather is still nice. And we would have it from 5:00 to 8:00 in the evening. It's usually a group of about 30 people who attend. The artists, those of us on the arts, or the Phantom Art Gallery Board. And, and then some community people who drop by, come by, and then leave. It's kind of an on, a moving thing from 5:00 to 8:00. And we would have it right in front of the building.
So when you say, anybody have any questions besides me here? When you say you're gonna have it right in front of the building, are you talking about on the sidewalk? Or are you gonna request Public Works to cone off some area for you?
Well, we are, we weren't requesting that because the last time, which was in September, we had it around. we had it around Maiden and Fulton. It wasn't, we were not requested to put any boundaries around. We did not. I noticed that a police officer-
But that's not what I'm asking you, though, Anita.
Oh, here.
What I'm asking you is, is that, are you going to only have this on the sidewalk?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, so...
On the sidewalk, just in the sidewalk. And there's a little entryway, so we'd probably have a table. And on the table is where our hors d'oeuvres and our wine and our glasses go. There's just that little indentation. And then, we would be standing looking in the windows.
Anybody else have any questions?
I see on the, it says request waiver of underage individuals in event. I think this is what-
Yeah, I confused.
It is. We have put that on everyone because sometimes families bring their children. We have had a child showing art once, a 13-year-old. So, his siblings were there. And families come, and, and then they go because they're bringing their children to appreciate art. So, that was always asked, that we would put that sentence in there.
And it's only going to be wine served?
And we only ask for it twice a year? Because there's a state statute that only twice a year we, we may ask for that.
What do you think?
I'd move for approval of license report number 1249.
Okay, we have a motion by Fensky, second by Hagan, to approve license report number 1249. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Discussion on temporary Class B picnic beer and wine licenses. This is brought forward from the last meeting, so, and Henry, you want to get it started on this?
This was not by design, but it certainly worked out that we got to practice a little bit before you get to talk about it. This issue came up last week, I think, or last meeting. I think the idea of doing, maybe being more efficient with how we're issuing these. You can see, you know, in the packet that we did include the requirements. They're fairly straightforward. I could tell you, there have been times where we have taken multiple requests. I think that was to your question, Deb, of, you know, if the Chamber had a year's calendar and knew it, could they come forward? And I think they can, under these rules. We would just treat them as individual events and 10 bucks per event, and probably a sheet, because each one's going to have their own little requirements. Now, you know, that's certainly something we can do. I know Terry talked about not knowing all the time, that far in advance. But we can do multiple issues. The other thing, too, and, and I don't know if the Chief wants to speak, but there's some Department of Justice changes now, it looks like, on background checks and some things. I don't know how that's going to factor into this. We're meeting Thursday to discuss, but it appears that some of the, if it's not law enforcement related, like this kind of stuff, that my office is probably going to have to initiate that process. So, I think, you know, that we got to work through that and, and understand where, where the changes are. And Chief and I and Barbara are meeting Thursday. There does look like you could delegate this task to my office, if you wanted to. It goes down in here, and you could, you know, delegate this whole issuance of these to my office, and you wouldn't even see them. And then, you know, I can report on them, on my monthly report. Maybe that's just something I talk about every month when I give my oral presentation. So, I think there's some, some options. But, you know, we, we have some pretty, you know, tight guidelines we have to, to follow. It's not unusual, you know, nonprofit clubs, you know, they're busy and they're, you know, they forget. I mean, how many times, it's, we've been better, but there's been times we've had special meetings to approve these because a club forgot to bring something forward, and they have an event on Saturday, you know. So, if, you know, one benefit might be of coming out of my office would be we could expedite it and, you know, and, and get it done, and, and maybe make life a little simpler if those situations come in. But it's really, obviously, up to you. I think one advantage of maybe not multiple requests, although I see the efficiency of it, is you know what's going on. You know next, in the next couple of weeks, next month, we've got three special events, and you know what they are. So, that's probably all I have to say about it. I don't know if Chief wants to weigh in or anything, but most of the time, we get repeat requests, right? You usually see, but we get some unique requests each year. But many times, it's just a routine of every year, these events come forward.
Well, I know I brought it up, and only because we argue about this all the time, about whether fences are needed and whether they're not. But I would think in a case like the Chamber, and I'm just going to use you guys as, as an example, you know you're going to have a business after 5:00 every month.
Yes.
You guys have been through this numerous times. If there's something totally out of the ordinary with the business after 5:00, I would think then, come back and explain it. But even having your business after 5:00 at the Chamber parking lot, you know that there's fencing required. You know what the rules are. And, you know, unless there's something really weird, why not just say, okay, you've got a blanket permit for the year, under the stipulation that if it is something a little strange, you're going to come back? I don't know.
I don't know that I'd want to issue a blanket permit at this level. I think Henry's idea of delegating it to his office makes more sense. And they review it on a case-by-case basis. The Chamber comes in once a month, or however often it is. And you know as well as any of us do, I think, what the requirements are. They would certainly expedite, streamline the process.
I agree with Alan. I think Henry's office could handle it. And, you know, with the Chief's involvement, between Henry's office and the Police Department, can handle this administratively. It wouldn't come before us. And as Alan said, they, they know the rules, and would abide by them.
I agree. I think that works with the Chamber, who does it very frequently. Then you have somebody like the testers, or whatever, good public information, and get it all, too, in kind of a little advertising form. And plus, makes us all more aware of what is going on if they do come here and have a chance to say something.
I'm not saying that we make that decision with a blanket, not, you know, like all of us saying, okay, Terry, you've got a blanket permit. No, no. I like the idea of it having to be done in the office, but to help them out, they know what they're doing. Why can't they issue more than one? Why does she have to come back every month for the same thing?
I think they go into Henry's office during the day sometime and save the trouble of coming here tonight.
Yeah, I, I don't know why they would have to come here.
I don't know if that, if, if we're going that route, City Attorney, is that like an ordinance change? I mean, I haven't looked in our ordinance. I don't know if that's, they can just do it by resolution? Or we should add an ordinance or something, I don't know.
I, I think that most of our ordinance is an adoption of the state code, the state statutes. And my reading of it is that the council can authorize someone to issue those licenses rather than having the council do it. That probably would have to be done by resolution. We've already also authorized the Park and Rec Department to issue permits to drink beer in the parks. So, we've already done that. That's just, that's a whole other deal. Could certainly do that in this instance. Has somebody in the clerk's office be in charge of it, or the clerk, or whoever, do it. I do think, though, that this statute, when you read it, it says that these permits are to be issued for particular picnics or similar galleries. My reading is that there must be a, a license issued for each event. Can't just say you've got one for the re, year, and have it anytime you want to. I don't think that applies. You have to have a license every time. If they come in and say, we're going to have one here, and one here, and one here, you could issue that license, collect the 10 bucks, and do it all in one shot if you wanted to. That, that certainly would be appropriate, when they know they're going to do it. But I think they have to have an application for each event and pay the fee. And then, the clerk would have the discretion, if they got an odd one, to refer to council for approval. Most of these are pretty good, right?
And I would, you know, if it was a bigger van, a new van-
You could do those things informally. And if you get one that's brand-new, or one that's questionable, you could kick it up to the council, and then put it on the agenda, and handle it that way. And you wouldn't get these all the time.
So, what you're saying, then, if we do what you guys are suggesting, which is not exactly the way I thought it was going to go tonight, but then you are leaving it up to the clerk's office to decide whether there would be fencing or not fencing, and you're okay with that? I'm just saying that. And don't forget this, that it wasn't more than two months ago where Chief and our city administrator were not in agreement on whether there should be fencing or not.
They still aren't.
And now, and now you're going to give permission to the city administrator, and you say the Chief should weigh in on it? Well, see, that's the one I would bop up to the council. I don't think I would ever do this without consulting with the Chief or the Lieutenant. And if there was a disagreement, then I think that would be prime of base cause to just bump it up and have you guys make the decision. Because we will disagree on that, I, there's no doubt. But I think some of these, 80% of them, we're going to be in agreement on, I'm sure. I'm sure. Pretty straightforward. Well, it seems like the, the biggest issue with the license is not granting the license, but what restrictions or what requirements they have, which is the fencing. It seems to be the biggest issue that's there. And we're, we obviously haven't come up with a definition of when a fence should be there and not be there. You know, if we could, that would make it a lot simpler, too. I'm not sure you can do that, but if we could, we could, again, we could take care of any of those issues that might happen. I was thinking, though, as long as you guys are, I got the microphone here, that we just granted a license to a Phantom Art Group across the street from our library, and they're going to hold this event where youths are allowed to come on their sidewalk. Anybody can walk by, grab a glass of wine. And we didn't say anything about fencing then. So, obviously, we don't have an issue with that.
Could I weigh in, Mayor?
What's that?
Could I weigh in here?
Sure, you certainly can.
Thank you. I would actually just prefer that it all go through the clerk's office. Everybody's clear on my position. I've always asked for a fence. Deb, you mentioned that a fence was required at the Chamber. It wasn't. They, they voted that down.
Oh, okay, sorry. See, I'm even confused. I'm sick of this.
Yeah, it's going through too many places. I'm perfectly comfortable with it going through the clerk's office. It keeps, just keep me out of it. You know what my position is? I've made my recommendations, and you've voted however you vote. By having all these agencies involved, it's a duplication of efforts. And it simplifies it just to have it go through the clerk's office. Now, what Henry mentioned a moment ago is about how I do checks. Before, we used to run a driver's license check through the time system, Department of Vehicles. Well, since my audit, I can't do that anymore. So, we have to divert that over to a, basically, it's a, it's a civil site where the city can sign up for it, and anybody can register within the city and run that information themselves. Now, for driver's license checks, there's no fee. There's always been a fee for criminal history checks. That's also been on a civil site. And anybody can be authorized in the city. So, all these checks can be done through there. I would just ask that they contact our office for any outstanding parking fines. That'd be our only involvement. Now, I can still run those checks myself, myself, or through my office. A lot of, most townships do that through their own clerk's office themselves. They very rarely contact the Sheriff's Office to do criminal histories. Most townships, like out in King, you know, that's done through the townships. They issue that themselves. So, I have no problem with this just all going to, I don't know if he can handle the workload or not. I don't know. I mean, I'd still be happy to do the criminal history and driver's license check. But to get these conflicting reports at these meetings is, is frustrating. And again, I have no problem with it just going through the clerk's office, if that's what you want to do. I, I think it simplifies matter. Especially tonight, when they come through on the sidewalk and nothing is restricted on that. That's, that's fine, but that's your decision. And again, to have this conflict, it's not really conflict. I have my opinion. I think everything outside should be fenced, and the council doesn't, so that's fine. And it just seems to simplify matters more for me and my agency, and hopefully for the clerk's office, too. Because they take the application, and they send me a copy. I sign off, then it gets back. Sometimes they even get lost in transition. So, now Barbara's actually made copies of those to make sure that she has a copy before she sends them over. So, that would kind of end that problem area, too. But again, I'm not saying I won't, I can't do it. We can. It's just we're all going to be on the same system. It's a civil system now, instead of going through the criminal justice system, through our computers. It's just a technicality, I guess, on their part.
Tim, if you have to pay for the website, is that the city of Wopaka paying that? Or, I mean, it like-
No, actually, I filled out my application today. And for that, there is no fee.
Okay.
But the criminal history has always been a fee, and that's been passed on to the applicant. So, nothing would change there. It would still be the $7 background check fee. So, yeah, there is no other fees associated with a governmental agency.
Okay, what do you want to do? We need to, as explained by our city attorney, if you want.
Terry has something to say.
Oh, what, Terry? Speak up.
Well, I didn't know if this was appropriate or not. You don't actually do a background check on the, for the beer and wine permits. You do a background check for anybody that has a bartender's license?
We do background checks on all agents.
Okay. But when you apply for a beer and wine permit, you have to have a licensed bartender on-site for that event, correct?
Right.
So, there is some check that's already been in place. I mean, when we hold our events, all of our staff are licensed bartenders in the city, so we already have that check done. So, I don't know if that makes a difference in helping in the process, but, okay. That's, I just wanted to ask.
There's something to talk about on Thursday, you know, how we do that. Yeah?
Okay.
So, the city attorney had recommended that this would be a resolution. So, would you like to have this resolution prepared and brought back to the next city council meeting? That would, you would like to say? I'd like to talk some more with Tim, and maybe the city attorney figure, and my staff, too, because this wasn't where I thought this was going either, quite frankly. But I think anything we can do to provide better customer service to the people that are applying is a good thing. And if we can turn something around in two days versus somebody waiting two weeks potentially, that's, that's good. So, I think it'd be a very good outcome, just work through the detail. All right, I don't think we need a motion, but you can expect to see this in a future city council meeting, to vote on. Yeah, let's go to the one item that was moved off of the consent agenda, and that was the minutes of the Parks and Rec. Deb, you asked for that to be taken off, so I'll let you lead here.
As I mentioned at the last council meeting, we've had some complaints about private businesses using the boat landings to make money and not pay any fee to the city. They're holding events that were unadvertised, or I shouldn't say unadvertised. We did not know about them, tied up the boat landing for the entire morning, and they were angry fishermen. So, I asked Erin about this, and this is on page- So I asked Aaron about this, and this is on page 120, 121 of your packets. The thing that bothered me, too, is that they hung a sign on the city park sign. There were no dates on that sign. There were no times on that sign. It's a generic sign that just said, "Paddle Palooza is here today." Okay. The problem that I have with this is that, first of all, it's private business. This is their advertising. This is what they're doing for their advertising, is leaving their vehicle and their trailers down there with no one there to man these. They're having people sign a waiver. That's great. But who's responsible after that? Also, are they cleaning the boats properly? Are they going from the chain or a different lake, not in this area, into our lakes? Anything that's gonna be stuck on the bottom of those boats is now gonna be in our lakes. I've had a question. Now, recently, I talked to Aaron about this tonight. I got a phone call from another couple. They're watching to see what's gonna happen because they want to do the same thing. If this is the way, the city is not gonna take any responsibility, the city is not gonna charge anything, then they're coming in with their kayak company and put their stuff down at the boat landings and not have anybody there, and you're gonna have a mess. So, um, my question is, what are other cities doing in a case like this? In this, there's one statement in here that kind of bothered me, and I'm hoping that someone in this room can explain it. It was mentioned that Shadow Lake is owned by the public and cannot be regulated. I don't quite understand that statement. If someone could explain that to me, why we cannot regulate. I don't think that's a correct statement.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit on, uh, on our discussion, and we have two park board members that can chime in any time, too. As far as that comment, you know, I think that probably came out of a discussion that wasn't going to address the questions that you had. I know that the two questions that I think you have, Deb, were the issue with this business parking there or using their signage in the park and possibly not even being in the park at that time and leaving it there. I think what park board, after we had a discussion, what they thought would be the proper steps at this point in time, and that might change if something doesn't happen, was, would be for me to continue to talk to them, continue to say, "Hey, this is an issue." The tough part, I think, is, is how do you... They have a type of business where, how do you prove that they're there or not there? Was it a comment that I heard in park?
Well, I have pictures on this phone, but I can't get them out of here. So you could take my phone if you want.
Right, and on the lake, it would be easy. What if they're, you know, somewhere else in the park? I don't know. The other issue that you brought up was the use of, or possibly charging profit organizations for using, let's say, the lake, for example, but that wasn't really the concern. It was taking up all of the parking that other citizens couldn't use at that.
It was that, and when you look at the fees that the county is charging or that the lakes, they have the little boxes where it's "on your honor" type of thing. Five dollars for a fee. Now, if you start multiplying this by every kayak they've got on their, on their trailer, that's a lot of money. I'm not saying that we should be charging fishermen who are out there, kayakers who are out there. I do, I love the fact that this is happening, that people are bringing this sport into the city. I think it's great. I'm just a little concerned that if we don't have some kind of regulations in place, we're gonna get in trouble with another company coming in saying, "Hey, you set a precedent. I don't have to pay any fees. I can park my boat here, or my car here, my trailer here, and nobody's gonna do anything about it." And you're gonna have conflicting companies down there taking up a lot of space. So before it gets out of hand, I wanted to bring this up.
So, and I know, Deb, you and I talked about this before the meeting, but I'll just fill everyone else in. One of the concerns was a larger event that happened on the lake. And all the parking lot was taken up. Residents might not have been able to use their boat, use the landing, and then park it, which was a concern.
They were actually told to come back later.
Right. Right. And I told Deb that this is similar to other instances where, we belong to a state association, the WPRA, and we have regional meetings once a month between the months of September and May. This has come up as discussion points with different departments as well, to, do we need to, you know, does it make sense to charge, let's say, an exercise group that's making money for using a park? Now, that's a little different, but it's the same concept.
Right.
I actually added that to the agenda. We're having a meeting this Thursday in Little Shoot, and we're bringing that up. And usually, there's about fifteen departments represented at these, from the valley area. So that, I would like to collect information on what other department's policy is on this, just to see how they're handling it. I know it's been asked before in these meetings and not much, I, we haven't seen much for a policy on that. I think it's always coming up as a question, but no one has had that answer yet. You know, we talked about fees, and I think you mentioned that you're not looking to charge anyone who's using them.
No, absolutely not. I'm just a little concerned about liability, and I'm concerned about, this is a private enterprise making money on a city property with nobody there. And those people did not have a permit to do that that day. I checked with Aaron. He didn't know anything about it. And I caught an earful from a very dear friend who wanted to fish that day. So that's why I brought it up.
Right, and I agree. I mean, that's something we don't want, anyone parking something that may be advertising a private business and leaving it there for a day or two days. We had an instance where someone pulled in a car on a trailer in Lower South Park, had a sign that said three thousand whatever dollars on it. We went and talked to him and said, "Sir, this is, you know, we don't want it turning into a used parking lot." And they were good about it, and they left. And then that's kind of the same type of thing. You're advertising, trying to sell, promote your product. I don't know if you guys want to weigh in on it, but I think that, am I wrong? Is that kind of the direction that we got as far as handling it at this point? And then if it's still, if it's still a problem moving forward, then we might have to rediscuss it?
Yeah, I think it just needs to kind of be watched, and I know you are. And you talked to the individual that did this, and, I mean, we just didn't feel at this time. And I think the individual was very understanding, right? He agreed, he's not gonna be hanging his sign on our sign, he's not gonna be there with his vehicle unattended, and I think he's compliant. And I, I mean, the individual we're talking about is a very nice person and...
That's something that I've heard the county say, too. He's a nice guy. And I know him. He's a nice guy. But so are you, Eric. Want to open up a business down there?
Well, it just needs to be monitored.
You know, it does need to be monitored. The county has a bigger problem. They've got it out on Highway K by the Red Mill on the bridge. And I was in a vehicle. The lady almost got hit. She was climbing over the guardrail, coming out of the water, climbing over the guardrail to cross Highway K. And it was a very dangerous situation. And, you know, the county, he's a nice guy. Yeah, well, it could have been a very bad situation that we don't want to have happen here. They've got a bigger problem.
Right. I guess, and anyone else who has anything, any input on it, it'd be great to hear, but I would like to go to this meeting on Thursday in Little Shoot. See how it's handled, see if anyone has anything in writing, how they handle it. And kind of bounce ideas off of all their departments and see what we can bring back and get back to you.
Thanks.
Lastly, report back to this board.
So does, by pulling this off of the consent agenda, now...
We have to approve the minutes, yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
There's one more thing I could add about fees, whether you have a sticker on the boat trailer or a sticker on the vehicle itself.
Yeah, it's on the vehicle now instead of the trailer.
That's what the county is, I think, now.
Because of kayaks and canoes on...
Enforce it, and how much time are you gonna spend chasing down there? We did mention a volunteer thing, too, but
Yeah.
We didn't know if that'd be worth it for the damage and vandalism and the theft that could come from that, too. How would you...
Yeah, at park board, we... Yeah, thanks, David. At park board, we did discuss fees for a boat landing, and I don't think, Deb, like you said, I don't think that's where you're getting at.
No, no, it isn't what I'm getting at.
Right, but we discussed that, and it was a unanimous vote, I think, that that's something that the park board didn't want to see, as far as everybody. But like I said, I don't know if that was the appropriate conversation to be having.
Well, I just have a little problem approving these minutes when it states in here, and I, maybe this is wrong, about that lake cannot be regulated. I just think that's a wrong statement, and if we approve these minutes, that's in there.
What the individual that said that meant, and the way I've always understood it is that nobody owns the water. We don't own the lake.
Well, yeah, duh.
So, I mean, that's what he meant by it. It's...
But...
That's what he said. Public-owned water.
That's not what it says here.
What does it say?
Shadow Lake is owned by the public.
If it was recited at it and they wrote it down, and so what the gentleman said, you can't go back and correct it now. He said it, so he put it in the minutes. That's all minutes are, is what was said. Doesn't mean it's right or wrong.
But if we approve them...
Lots of things are wrong said at meetings, but they're put in the minutes. All minutes are is what was said, and you agree that was what was said.
I wasn't there, John. How do I know what was said?
You're right, and that's what the minutes say. This is what we said.
Okay.
You're saying that isn't a correct interpretation of the law. That's beside the point. You can't not, not say these minutes are correct.
Okay, so we are not gonna regulate. Okay.
Right.
As long as we're not gonna regulate them. That's fine with me.
I think all that meant was is that anyone can go on that lake, subject to DNR regulations, which has to do with speed and various other things. The city cannot regulate the use of that lake. However, it can regulate the use of the landing, and that's where you're coming from. If they go to someone's front yard and put in a hundred kayaks and have an event, there's much you can do. That lake is gonna be free for them to use it, and you can't regulate that. It's just like all the boats out on the chain of lakes. They pay their fee, as many as they want to, and go out there.
Okay, so these guys are not paying a fee?
Right.
And we can't regulate it?
No, no, I know they are. I know they are. I know they are. But you can regulate them going in there by charging a fee, but you can't stop anyone from going on there.
That's what I'm saying, John. I don't care if the people go on the lake. What I'm saying is, this is a private enterprise. They're making money on our boat landing.
Trying to clarify the business about use of the lake. That's all.
Yeah, fine.
I did have a opportunity to talk to, uh, the owners, too, of the kayak, and I do believe that they weren't thinking this whole thing through when they put the sign up on the city sign.
Oh, well, you can't regulate it.
I, you know, and, again, I think making them aware of that, I don't think they'll do it again. They know they're not supposed to do it, and I do agree with you, Deb. I mean, we don't want to allow people to advertise down there. But again, I think they made a mistake, and they have agreed that they made that mistake, and hopefully it doesn't happen again.
So do we, what do we do with this, then? You go and find out what's going on, but in, you know...
As far as the fees for, you know, making money in a park or a city-owned property.
Can't regulate it.
I can, well, no, I can find out. I mean, I'm not saying you can't. We can charge for that. That's a possibility to do that. But I guess I would like to find out how that's done in other places, or what the normal is for that.
Thank you, Aaron. I appreciate what you're doing.
We need to look at the minutes of the parks and rec meeting that were moved from the consent agenda and approve those minutes so we can move on.
So I have, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the parks and recs' most recent minutes of their meeting.
Any discussion?
Go ahead.
Is it, is it proper to go into a discussion on this issue from the minutes rather than simply just approve the minutes? Because this discussion was not on the agenda. It was simply the minutes themselves.
But I pulled them off of the consent agenda. There was an issue on there that needed to be discussed. Why can't we discuss that?
I didn't say, I merely was asking a question of procedure.
You're asking the city attorney or...
If you think there's something wrong in the minutes, then you should ask for a correction and then move for approval. But if those minutes are accurate as to what was recited at that meeting, then you approve.
So going into a discussion of the issues of those minutes would not necessarily be...
Well, the discussion really this evening is not about the minutes themselves. It's about what we do about the problem. I don't think you have an objection to those minutes. Just wanted to get that issue in front of the council, which you brought up last week, how you've done that.
Two weeks ago, sure.
Aaron has said that he's going to look into it. Possibly that would be brought back to council at another day as an action item to either enforce a fee or something. I don't think it's important to council tonight to do any kind of action on this, and you had said that also. It's not an action item.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Against?
No.
Motion carried. You got the one, no?
Right.
Okay. Next, we have a, we need a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C, as it pertains to the consideration, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data as it relates to the file, or filling, I'm sorry, filling of the finance director treasurer position.
Go move.
Second.
A motion by Hackett and a second by Hagan. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
John Lockwood? Oh, Don's absent. Scott Prochazki?
Aye.
And Deb Bensky?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Department head, you can leave. That's fine. We will not...
Sure.
Yeah. We'll take a five-minute break, too. I know we're in closed session, but we won't discuss.